Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Yuba City City Council. I have some information to read regarding our virtual information. The governor has declared a state of emergency to existing California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued Executive Order N-3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. Public health and well-being are top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health-safety precautions. How to participate in this virtual meeting? This meeting is utilizing Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions-and-answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question-and-answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question-and-answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed, or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espendola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
All right, please rise, so we'll have the invocation by the Vice Mayor, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for your goodness and your graciousness. We pray that you'll give us clarity and wisdom on all decisions that come before us and the path for the city going forward. And in all that, we give you the praise, glory, and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Moody, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item for consideration is the agenda modification. Any modifications to the agenda? Seeing none, so we'll go ahead and move on with the agenda as approved.
Mr. Mayor?
I forgot to do the city attorney's report on closed-session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were no reportable action taken in closed session. However, I believe there was one recusal.
Correct. I, the mayor, myself and I, recused myself on Item B. All right, COVID-19, item 1, COVID-19, discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. This will be presented by Diana Langley, our interim city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So not much to update tonight. We continue to be in the purple tier. I will note that Steve Smith, the CEO for Sutter County, did provide today that both counties have immunized or provided the vaccination for about 60% of the 65-plus population. And so they're really encouraging getting those that are 65 and older to sign up to receive the vaccine. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions related to city operations or any other items.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none?
Right, thank you.
Thank you for your report. Item number 3 is public communication, appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference, or submit comments by mail, or show up in person. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the council chamber. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one can be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Do we have any comments from the public on this item, from the audience?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Was it your intent to also combine this with item number 1, the discussion of the public comments on the coronavirus pandemic? In other words, public comment for both of them?
It was.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have any public comments on the coronavirus?
No public comment.
Awesome, thank you. Do we have any public comments on the appearance of interested citizens item?
No public comment.
Even more awesome, thank you. Consent calendar. Do we have any public? No. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? Anybody on the email?
No public comment.
All right. Council, any items to be discussed or removed for discussion on the consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar items.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Espendola, a second by Vice Mayor Shaw. Because this is Zoom, we need to have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Espendola?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Yes. Consent calendar is approved unanimously. Thank you. Business items. Item number 12, accept grant funding and expenditure recommendations for the California citizens' option for public safety COPS grant of $100,000. This will end up in a public hearing presentation by our police chief, Rob Landon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. The subject is exactly what the mayor just said, to accept grant funding and expenditure recommendations for the California citizens' option for public safety, which is a COPS grant. It comes about once a year, depending on state funding. And this year, our dollar amount, I believe, is just announced at $107,000. So our recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, and after consideration, adopt the resolution, authorize a finance director to make a supplemental budget appropriation as necessary, and its fiscal impact is $100,000 with no matching fund. And I apologize for not having a PowerPoint. Each year, dependent upon state budget priorities, funds may be allocated to law enforcement agencies to assist in carrying out priorities as established by the chief of police, or the sheriff in unincorporated areas or contract cities. Over the last several years, monies have been made available through the state of California to local law enforcement entities in the forms of the COPS grant. This year, we have approximately $107,000. The police department has traditionally utilized funding obtained in this grant for major approval expenditure category of technology advancement, critical patrol safety equipment, and infrastructure improvements for the benefit of frontline law enforcement delivery to the citizens of our community. Funding directions are based upon needs assessments from the department's management group, in consultation with the rank-and-file employees, and input from the city's IT staff and our research and development unit, which is one person. Prior years expenditures have been for such items as radio upgrades, emergency operations center retrofits for the police department, total service weapons upgrade for all officers, and that's been about 20 years for that, equipping all patrol vehicles with mobile data terminals integrated with the police communications center, and then required upgrades in the fire police computer-aided dispatch system. So we would suggest a continuation along this path of technology evaluation and implementation, I wrote this and I put that word in there, along with some much-needed patrol staffing equipment upgrades, which has served us very well over the last 20 years. The department recommends making the following purchases. And just so you understand, the way that we do the COPS process at the police department is we go to every single unit, and we ask them to make recommendations for what they feel that we should have in the next upcoming budget. And then based on that, we have a couple of meetings, and they present the list at the end of the day as close to $100,000 as possible. So for this year, patrol-related, and they all have to be frontline law enforcement needs, you can't have it to supplant prior expenditures or future budget items. So patrol-related items, we're asking for 30 Glock 17 pistols, which will replace the remaining 40-caliber pistols. We're trying to get everybody, again, to shoot the same type of weapon. It's easier for training, it's easier during emergencies. 9-millimeters are now a more popular weapon. More FBI data has been accumulated, and they feel like, based on that, it's a cheaper ammunition to shoot, and it's as effective as the 40-caliber as well, without penetrating through outer walls and stuff. So there's been a lot of research, and we agree with the research, and we would like to do that at a cost of $15,000. By doing that, we're replacing the old 40-calibers, and we will put those out to sell at the place where we buy the 9-millimeters, as we have in the past. But there's not a lot of return on those, because they are a couple generations old. We'd also like to get go-bags for each patrol vehicle equipped with basic medical supplies, and additional weapon magazines in the event of a mass critical event. We've seen that in the past where the need has arisen. We have actually experienced that at the police department where an officer was shot, and having the go-bag there to stop the bleeding and put a tourniquet on them, potentially, and probably save their life. Too many drones and training for two additional personnel. Drones have been utilized on patrol to help apprehend fleeing suspects safely and can be used during search and rescue operations, and that's at a cost of $3,000. I really highly recommend the drones. I am not intimately familiar with those, but this past week, we had a SWAT call-out that ended up with a K-9 apprehension, where the suspect was hiding in the backyard with multiple trailers, chicken coops, dog kennels, and all kinds of stuff back there that created a very dangerous environment to send our officers into. By placing the drone up in the air, we were able to figure out where the suspect, narrow him down to certain locations. So it's very impactful, and we have used those on multiple calls. We actually had to use the Yuba County Sheriff's Department on that one, and I think they are very, very, very effective. Redman instructor suit and two student redman suits. So for those, and that's at a cost of $6,500. A redman suit allows the officers to practice using force on a live person, but have that person suited up in a very padded uniform-type equipment. So it teaches you how to do it in a practical environment, because obviously, just hitting a dummy, or hitting a pole, or something like that, isn't as effective as actually seeing a person when they're moving and avoiding the areas that they don't want to hit, and making sure they're hitting the areas that they're supposed to be hitting. So that's something that we are in dire need of, our old one. Unfortunately, they do take a beating, and we're running out of duct tape. Technology, oh, the other thing for patrol is license plate readers. Now, we've asked for these in the past, and because of the ongoing costs, we haven't been able to fully be able to utilize those. This year, we've seen what Sutter County is doing with theirs, and three license plate readers in one year of service would allow the department strategically place cameras in high-traffic areas to assist in locating vehicles that are stolen or wanted in connection with serious felony crimes. That's at a cost of $25,000. And I think, based on our area's level of stolen vehicles, this is one equipment or tool that we can put in our bag to help us effectively combat that, because it'll automatically search through thousands and thousands of things that an officer couldn't possibly do. Technology, we'd like to buy a new throw-phone system for the hostage negotiations team to utilize during critical events. So what a hostage throw-phone is, is basically, a lot of times, people's cell phones die. So in a critical event like a SWAT call-out, they're inside of a house, we have no way of communicating them absent a bullhorn, so we're not getting that effective communication with the person. We can place the throw-phone inside the house, or close enough for the suspect to pull it out and be able to negotiate with them. What this does, without giving away too much of the technology and the uses that we will have with it, it has video cameras, and it allows us to capture the event as it's happening in real time. So that's at a cost of $28,000. We do have one of those. It does not have the same capability, and with all the liability in our current environment, we would like to have something like that to record, document, and also to be a helpful tool for the officers. Specifically for SWAT, we're asking for two set of night vision optics and accompanying laser optics. This enhances the ability for the officers to operate in nowhere-low-light situations, and two sets of binoculars for SWAT sniper team, the current being utilized, out of date and in need of replacement, at a cost of $1,500. Sniper is not the same as a military-type term. We use a lot of that for scouting, and advanced scouting, and placing them in a position of advantage from a afar location, so the better optics they have, the more effective they can communicate back to the officers that are up close and personal. And finally, the last item we're looking for is purchase of five iPhones and hard-mount cases for traffic officers. These will be mounted to the motorcycle and give traffic officers the ability to see the computer-aided dispatch call screen. This will also give them use of a phone to mark body camera videos in the field, saving them time from going through videos at the end of the shift, and it also helps for the racial profiling identification that we're going to have to start using at the beginning of this year, so the officer doesn't have to go to a set location for 15 minutes and put all the data. It allows them to do it on scene. The computer-aided dispatch is very important for traffic. It's the big disadvantage of being a motor unit, is you don't have a computer to see where everybody's at while you're out in the field. This allows them that ability, while also to be able to check driver's license and license plates without constantly talking to dispatch and tying up the radios. So that total comes out to about $98,700, and any remaining money can be used as a contingency, since these are approximate numbers and not based on competitive bids at this time. The fiscal impact is $100,000. The alternative is to provide staff with alternative spending paths, which will not supplant routine expenditures in a general fund. And with that, the recommendations are to conduct a public hearing, and after consideration, adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept the fiscal year 2020/2021 California citizen options for public safety grant, and approve expenditures, and authorize the chief financial officer to make budget adjustments as necessary. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have, Mayor or Council.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Landon? Seeing none, go ahead and open a public hearing. Public hearing on California citizens' option for public safety grant funding and expenditure recommendations in the amount of $100,000 is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none in the audience, we'll wait a second here.
No public comment.
Okay. I do have a quick question. Since you said the new amount is 107, should we amend this for the 107 instead of the 100, so that he has authorization to spend the 107,000?
You have authority to discuss and take action on that tonight, but Chief, was it 107 or 98,700?
So 98,7 is the dollar amount that we came up with. In looking through, because it does tend to change sometimes, I looked at it today, and the dollar amount was 107,000. It's built on a percentage. So the actual COPS for the city of Yuba City is 100,000. 107, I'm sorry.
So city council, if you need to amend it to be 107,000, that's within the action item tonight. We would just adopt the resolutions, and just change that number to 107,000, and Mrs. Wakefield and I can work and make that on the back end, clean it up on the back end.
Okay. So no more public comment, just checking one more time, Sierra, in case something came in on email?
No public comment.
All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the council. Or comments, or a motion?
A comment, if I may?
Please.
Just a comment. Very good job. I'm kind of jealous, all those toys you get, and me, able to get that into $100,000, all that good stuff, it's going to be good, and keep our people much safer. So, good job on that.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'll be looking forward to it, too, if I should.
We will gladly invite you guys, if you want to come to Defensive Tactics Day, we're always looking for volunteers.
She looks good in red.
Through the mayor, I have a...
Go ahead, please.
Can we, actually, you know, that might not be a bad idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, Councilman, are you in for the...
I'm in to watch. I think it's a plastic...
The idea of doing, I was just interested in the technology that you mentioned for the license. What is, can you, the license, what is that?
License plate reader?
Yeah.
Automated license plate reader?
Yeah, so...
Oh, you're getting into the technology.
I just like technology. I really enjoy that, so...
Is that car-mounted or a fixed?
A fixed location.
Fixed one?
Yes.
Oh, really? Are we disclosing the fixed locations?
No, but they will be high-traffic areas. And unless you're driving a stolen car or something, and a felony, you have nothing to worry about.
Okay, just wondering, because I do hear a lot of fast cars drive, man, it's like crazy sometimes. So the actual camera takes the pictures of thousands and thousands of license, and then identifies stolen potential ones, and is that kind of, in a summary of the way?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Nice. Very good. All right, thank you.
Through the mayor?
Go ahead.
Chief, you mentioned we had to use Yuba County's drone. Is that because...
Well, it was a strategic call, that theirs was more available at the time, they had an operator ready, and he just happened to be part of their SWAT team. We have a combined multi-jurisdictional SWAT team with Yuba County, so he was just there, and he had his encased, and it was ready to go. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Through the mayor. Chief, love all the ideas, anything to help keep our officers safe, let them do your job better, and keep our citizens' eye all behind, so thank you for that. The only question I would have is, if they dress in red, can we go back to the Old West, and you square me in for the day?
We'll work on that, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't need to add anything, other than I think this is a great opportunity for us to continue to provide our officers with things that are going to make them and the public more safe. So I appreciate the work of you and your staff in pursuing this and being successful. I know it's not competitive, but you still have to do the work, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council?
Through the mayor?
Please.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept the fiscal year 2020/2021 California citizens' option for public safety COPS funding and approve expenditure recommendations with the amendment that the grant is 107,000, and then likewise, authorize the finance director to make a supplemental budget appropriation for the grant expenditures to 100-43117, and grant expenditures to 2180-69201.
Second. All right, I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, and a second by Councilmember Shaw. Roll call vote, please. It's okay.
The second was Harris, correct?
Harris.
What did I say, Shaw?
Shaw, it could be. One of the...
Shaw, whatever.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Espendola?
I think I need to go back to virtual land. Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Yes.
If I may, before you continue?
Please.
Brian, I got a text from a constituent saying the Zoom leak is a problem. I don't know what else to, I just put it in on you. You're good? Okay. I just wanted to pass that on, if somebody's not having, it could be operator error, but as long as we, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Council.
All right. We'll move to item 13, which is the Sutter Bike Path Gap Closure Design Award. This is going to be presented by our interim city manager, Diana Langley.
Good evening. So the project includes the extension of the Sutter Bike Path from its current terminus at Hoopa Road east to Harder Parkway, which would be the future Harder Park, and then also a shared path on the west side of Harder Parkway from Butehouse Road to Highway 20. And so the Public Works Department has been working to extend the path. The project will create more opportunities for recreation, exercise, and shopping, and in June 2019, the city received a $150,000 grant through the Active Transportation Program. So the city issued a request for proposals and received three proposals. The proposals were ranked using the criteria shown, and all consultants were highly qualified. It's just that Dawkins Engineering was ranked the highest unanimously with a score of 91 out of 100. The reason that Dawkins' proposal ranked the highest is because of their ability to work with Caltrans. They demonstrated that with the Fifth Street Bridge Project. Also, their proposal went into a lot of analysis of potential issues, and you could tell that they really put a lot of thought into this specific project. And then also, their quality control officer is a daily bike commuter and league-certified cycling instructor, and we felt could provide an element to this project that would be special to the design team. So the fiscal impact, the total contract amount is $182,652.01. Again, the grant of $153,000 through the State Active Transportation Fund, and then local match of $29,652.01, of which there's funding available in the capital improvement program account. And so the recommendation is to adopt a resolution awarding a contract to Dawkins Engineering in the amount of $182,652.01, subject to material terms, with the finding that it is in the best interest of the city. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Langley? Do we have any comments from the public?
No public comment.
Okay. With that, entertain a motion on this item?
I move to adopt the resolution awarding the professional service agreement to Dawkins, is that how you say it? Dawkins Engineering a full sum for the Sutter Bike Path Gap Closure, preliminary engineering services in the amount of $182,652.01. It's interesting that we have one cent on that. Subject to material terms, with the findings that it's the best interest of the city. And we selected him because he rides his bike. I want to know if he rides the bike in Yuba City, because it's pretty dangerous riding your bike in Yuba City, so I hope they make it safer for all of us. Those are added comments. Mayor?
Second. All right, I have a motion which was seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Espendola?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Yes. All right. Future agenda items, this opportunity to discuss, the city manager, about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Are there any other comments relating to the agenda items that may have come in during the meeting? Sierra?
No public comment.
Okay. From my fellow council members, anything that you would like to look forward to on a future agenda? Seeing none? All right, we'll move to reports and communications. Following reports and communication items are provided for council's information. No action can be taken on these items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. We will start off with Councilmember Espendola, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It's really nice to be here in person with all of you, so it's good to be in the room together. With the Bi-County Homeless and the JPA, we haven't had a meeting, but I did talk to Diana, and one of the things about that is reaching out with Sutter County CAO to get a better understanding of the fiscal impacts with the overnight camping areas in the city. And as an ad hoc committee, we have not met in months, so perhaps there's a good opportunity to regroup as an ad hoc committee. The River Valley Air Quality Management District, my first meeting will be on the 22nd, so I'll be there for the first time on that. No meeting in the North Valley Integrated Regional. With the Regional Water Authority, our next meeting is March 11th. I did attend the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Meeting, which there was quite a bit to cover in that particular meeting, and I'm going to just go through a couple of the highlights to share with my colleagues in the community. So the Sutter County FEMA accreditation is in the process right now with Sabuka and the coordination with Sutter County, which will then submit a 100-year accredited package for the Southern Feather River levee, which reaches FEMA in the fall. So that will help with the insurance and the floodplains in the southern part of our area. Also, there's some work that is being done in Yuba City in Live Oak for the boat ramps and cleaning mitigation projects that are occurring. One really big piece of potential great support for our levees, even though it's been dry this year, but we need to be prepared. In November 2020, Sabuka submitted to CalOES a notice of interest for funding to implement critical repairs along the Sutter Bypass East Levee. And so this notice of interest has been approved by CalOSHA, and Sabuka has been invited to submit a full application, which is due on March 5th. An eligible sub-applicants which are selected will then be sent to FEMA, and perhaps be funded by FEMA ineligible. If we're not funded, we get on the list, and the actual project is for $32 million, a request for design permitting construction of levee improvements to two of the three critical most-reaching protecting areas of the southern basin. And then, lastly, on that one, Buteh County Supervisor Kimbleshue is the new chair, and mishap by my colleague, Councilman Harris, I am now the vice chair of that committee as well. So, thank you, Councilman Harris, for that. So, no other activities on my local assignments. I did participate, and I think we were all invited, to a White House Intergovernmental Affairs Meeting on the 4th of this month. The Director Julie Chavez Rodriguez was present on that. Former Ambassador Roberta Jacobson of the National Security Council of the Southern Border Policy. Taylor Moran of the Domestic Policy was part of that and part of the areas that they were talking about and discussions of how workforce and employment visas were discussed, in particular because our region is a large agricultural base. So, some of these decisions may impact our area. Ali Zadi, who is the White House Deputy National Climate Advisor, was there. There was discussion in reference to the water and infrastructure and the need for the emphasis that will be placed on cities and regions with a higher poverty and disadvantaged communities, since Yuba City qualifies under some of these particular guidelines because we're an entitlement for CDBG funding. So, I submitted a question to Mr. Sahid, in which I asked him of the question was, you know, is cities have an opportunity for flexible funding to assist with expenses incurred due to COVID because of water? We have put some of our consumers are not able to pay for their water expense or also for assisting with housing and businesses and future funding for infrastructure. And the answer was a high-level answer in reference to the American Rescue Plan, that is, that there's funding set aside for situations like ours. And I hope to attend future meetings if invited again. So, lastly, I do want to say that I want to do a special shout out to our Yuba City Fire Department. If you haven't seen the love video that they produced, it is so, it's really, really. Hey, Chief, you're back there on the teams, Alexandra. I know that your team did a really nice job, and I just want to publicly thank you for your work on that. And also, the regional work that you've done with Alexandra Mosario from Yuba County PIO Department helped put this together and supporting our regional support and collaboration work on hopefully making some headways here with COVID. And one major, 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 major thank you and gratitude. Gratitude and thank you to Diana Langley. You are such an exemplary leader, such a servant heart, genuinely care about the well-being of our city staff, our executive team, our community. Your family has been completely supportive, and I thank your family for doing this for us for almost two years, Diana. Almost two years. There's been gaps in those two years, but you have done this for us. And I cannot say how grateful I am to have worked in this capacity with you for these last years. And it's a measure of character that I strive to be in your example. So, thank you so much. And that also, the work that you do with our executive team, they're so trustworthy with you. They work really hard, every single executive team member, Spencer, Natalie, Brad, Ben, our Fire Chief, Alexandra, Police Chief Landon. They've worked so close with our team. And we couldn't have done as much as we've been able to do that because of our team and the executive. But with that, it also includes all the city employees, every single city employee, because without Sierra and Brian and Judy and all the legwork that is done to produce and put these meetings together for all of us, it could never have been done as well. But it's been your leadership, Diana, that has moved us along. And with Shannon, our city attorney, being by your side in every way. And so, I know we're transitioning into a new era, I would call it, a new beginning or a new chapter, right? And Dave Vaughn is here with us, and I welcome the change, the opportunity. And I just wanted to thank you and give you the full recognition because it's really not the City Council or myself that does the best work for the city. It is you, it's our executive team, it's the city employees, and the community benefits so much from that. And I just genuinely thank you so much for the work that you've done.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Just the last couple of weeks, I met with, had the opportunity with the Mayor and Diana, members of SAICOG and their consultant regarding a transportation study. SAICOG is working to benefit our regions. Our primary concern was transportation related to commercial areas of development, also trucks. There's a lot of opportunity to improve the way goods and services are moved throughout the city, and so, we had a good opportunity to discuss that. Also, met with the Mayor and members of the Regional Housing Authority. We primarily discussed pending and proposed Richland Village Project as well as the opportunities to enhance communication with RHA regarding future and current projects. I did have an opportunity also to go on a little ride-along, if you will, with their Finance Director Mario Cruz and Gus Becerra of Regional Housing Authority. And they showed me probably half of the projects current and pending in their sphere of influence, if you will. I did not have the time to get up to Grass Valley or Livock or out in Colusa County area. But from what I did see, it was very interesting and eye-opening. It was a good benefit to put eyeballs on all those projects and have some frank discussions with them. So, I'd also recommend it from all my friends here to do the same thing. And more to follow on all of that, RHA stuff and SAICOG stuff as things progress. More on SAICOG. I'm a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. It was primarily a get-to-know-you first meeting of the year for the new members, continuing with our focus on vibrant places, connected communities, and of course, economic prosperity. That meets quarterly throughout the year. Basically, just gives focus to where we go on our blueprint for progress. The SAICOG Land Use and Natural Resource Meeting, another, you know, one of the first meetings of the year. So, introductory all the way around to the new versus old members. One of the primary things we discussed was part of that, land use and natural resources, and of course, SAICOG in general. We do the airport land use compatibility, and there's a study pending on that. This one we discussed was regarding Mather, future development in that area. Mather Air Force Base or former Air Force Base. I had a meeting, my first meeting, the School District Liaison. Diana did a really good job explaining the projects we have going on in the city specific to things related to schools, not the least of which were the two items we recently talked about, improvements along Walton and also from the bike paths south on Harder to Highway 20, both of which will assist and make things safer for kids getting to school, one to River Valley and the other one down to Lincoln. And in some cases, was that AK there? So, the list goes on. Roadway improvements, a lot of things going on in the city designed to not only benefit traffic, but pedestrians, and most importantly, of course, our children getting to and from school. So, I'm looking forward to being a part of that committee as well. And that is it. Thank you for having my back on Sabuka. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kirchner?
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, something popped up on social media, and that was the anniversary, four-year anniversary of the spillway disaster up in Orville. And it kind of put things in perspective for me. I was up there shortly after that happened and was given a tour. And to think what it could have happened. I don't know if anybody's been up there recently, but it's absolutely amazing the difference of what had happened to what it looks like now. So, those, just seeing those memories pop up on social media made me appreciate how very fortunate we were that the unthinkable didn't happen. The one meeting, the one board meeting that wasn't canceled this month was Yuba Sutter Mosquito Vector. And I had a great opportunity to meet some neat folks down there. One of the things that they've done recently is they've got some surplus property that they're putting, selling at auction, including three pickup trucks, some ATVs, and some other miscellaneous items. There's progress on recruiting a vector ecologist. They had two applications for that. And a vacant MCT position. They had 11 applications for that. Also, the vacant Yuba County trustee position was filled by John Link. Other activities, they purchased three new trucks through Givicky Ford, $24,300 apiece. And those were a competitive bid. The Givicky beat out the bids from Sacramento, which was nice to hear. Something that has changed in how they do business, recently in September, they've moved from spraying the rice fields to spraying the orchards, which apparently to date, looks like it's working. And so, they're very optimistic about that. Lastly, I'm really excited about this extension to our bike path and looking forward to seeing everybody out there on it. And that's all I. What's that? Mr. Mayor, for you, I can get one. And that's all I've got.
Councilman Kirchner, are you going to invite us to some sort of event?
I want to be on the handlebars. Absolutely.
The Buttes, remember?
We should, yeah. Well, and that's a great question. Unfortunately.
What's happened?
I've been, yeah. Usually this time of year, well, what is this, March? Yeah, usually this time of year is when you start seeing all these ride notifications pop up because everybody, every service club has fundraisers, and Bike the Buttes is one of those.
Right.
And I'm really hopeful that they're going to have it this year. But to date, I haven't heard anything. I know a lot of these are going towards more of a, kind of a virtual. Yeah. So, the one, the big one in Chico, which usually is right around the same time as the Buttes ride, has decided to go that route this year. So, I'm keeping my fingers crossed because I hope to see everybody out there.
I'm riding the bike. I'm doing it. Are our colleagues doing it? Okay. Just wondering. Get the tricycles out. I mean, the bicycles, sorry.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just add on that bike. The only bike that you will find me on will have Screaming Eagle attached to it somewhere because it's got a big engine under it. I'm seeing the thumbs up. So, anyway, with that, Mr. Mayor, during the past couple of weeks, my meetings are kind of crunched. I've got those coming up later this week. But I did have the opportunity to meet with GSEC and look forward to picking up a few projects that the former Mayor Harris was already working on with GSEC and reporting back here in the future. So, bring more opportunities up here to our area. So, that's good. With that, I just want to echo the sentiments earlier, Ms. Langley. I said at last meeting, you've definitely earned the title of Master Cat Herder because you have corralled everyone around for the past two years. Thank you. I think you'll find that sentiment across, that accolades. And you've been incredible. Thank you for your dedication, your service, your leadership, your humbleness, your insightfulness. I mean, need we say more? It's been an honor to have you as leading the E-Team. And with that, not quite here, but I am extremely encouraged because he's not supposed to be here for another week. But Mr. Vaughn, our new City Manager, is with us, and that's dedication that's hitting the ground running. I'm really looking forward to what the future has before us and what you'll bring to the executive team and our city team. And we just all need to rally together as a group and propel this city forward because I think our greatest days are ahead of us yet. And that's just because of the dedication I see across the board from all of our team members who work for the city. We've got some good days and good years ahead of us. So, with that, I'll have more next time, Mr. Mayor. And that concludes.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Been a pretty busy week for me with city-related stuff. I do also want to acknowledge Dave Vaughn's in the audience. Been working on his onboarding, which I believe he began today. It's quite a full schedule as he begins to integrate himself into the city structure. And so, welcome aboard. It's like, you know, they keep talking about drinking from a fire hose. I think this is probably like more like a big water main. I don't know that it's a fire hose. The meetings I attended, Councilmember Harris, got to make sure I get this right, and I met with Sutter County Supervisors, the Chair, Dan Flores, and Matt Conant. It's an Intergovernmental Relations Committee, which its intent is to continue to work collaboratively for things that are going on in Sutter County. I know one of the things that we chatted about, there was several, but one that was probably most important and one that we all had participated in in the past was visiting a few of our local businesses and just checking in with them from both a Sutter County and a Yuba City aspect. More on that and further on down here. As Councilmember Harris mentioned, we did meet with the staff of the Richland, not Richland, the Regional Housing Authority. And I will tell you that I'm not going to go over what we discussed because Mr. Harris already has. But we will be coming back to this group in regards to the Richland Village Project. So, we need to take that up again and figure out what funding the city is willing to participate in. And they've got some things they're getting together for us as well. I have invited Mr. Becerra to come to present to the Council, not in conjunction with an ask, but just on what they're doing. And he has agreed to do that. So, we'll get him scheduled down the road here. Did, Vice Mayor Shaw and I have participated in a meeting with the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. And again, we owe some information back to this Council on that. We're working through some things. We've asked for some more clarifying information, and Spencer and Diana and Lynn Hale have been very gracious in providing that information. But we will be coming back to the Council with some budget stuff here in the not-too-distant future. Again, the SAICOG meeting with Lon Hata Mee's Consulting Group and James Corliss from SAICOG, exciting stuff. They have money. They're interested. We just have to give them something to take a look at. And there was a good discussion. This is a regional effort. So, in regional, I don't necessarily mean that it's something that's just a huge region, but they're very interested in doing something up here in Yuba and Sutter Counties as it relates to growing business and economic development. And there's some exciting projects, I think, that we can bring to the table. Did meet with the City Manager and Mr. Phil Treener. And it was a good meeting. As you know, we have an issue with biosolids, the disposal of such. And Mr. Treener has presented and has perhaps an option for us to consider down the road as we begin to deal with, you know, the long-term issue of getting biosolids taken care of out of our wastewater treatment plant. I do want to take a moment to, and perhaps I'll lean on you, Diana, just to give a brief update on where we're at with the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. I know that you're involved with that, but I believe the Council is probably interested in hearing where we're at.
Yes. So, the Bog Stewart Master Plan, Master Tax Exchange Agreement, the draft was provided to the county a couple of weeks ago. And it's my understanding that the county has routed it to their consultant and county council. And those comments back are back to Steve Smith. And so, he's now preparing the comments to submit back to the city.
So, we're hopeful that we're, again, we keep talking about nearing the finish line. It would be very helpful to get this wrapped up as I do believe, and Mr. Moody, you can confirm this, is that we're looking at a potential annexation in March at Lafco for a piece of property. Okay. Yeah, go ahead. No.
They're trying to bring it in March.
Okay. Regardless, we want to get the Master Tax Exchange Agreement taken care of. It's been, it's been a long project for us. I do want to touch relationship to development impact fees. It's been reported in this chambers that, and other places, that the reduction that this council authorized in development impact fees has definitely made an impact in interest in development. There are a few, few things that we need to take up in the, in the future. One is some conversation with Sabuka in regards to, to fees that they're currently charging. Another is discussions with the school district, and that's just a matter of the Vice Mayor and I getting some dates to the city manager so that we can get those discussions going. And in reality, for us as a council, is to review our growth policies. We need to bring that back forward. So don't have a specific timeline in that, but that's on, on a work program or a work list coming forward, along with just a review of our city priorities. I do want to take a moment, I think Councilmember Esmondola reached out to acknowledge the work of the Fire Department and Chief Alexander in regard to some work they're doing for, I call it critical incident stress, some call it PTSD, there's a lot of different acronyms for it, but they are taking some fairly significant and important steps in dealing with, with individuals who are in public safety, who experience traumatic incidents and have, and experience difficulties. And, you know, it's, it's something that, that used to be hidden, and it's, it's something that is extremely valuable, not only for the members who may be affected, but of course, the families that they live with, too. Couple other things real quick, and actually three. There's, there's three things that I think that, you know, continue to be top priority for the council, or in the top priority. One is economic development, and, you know, at this particular point in time, Vice Mayor is working with GSAC and the EDC to, to work to align those efforts on, on our behalf of the city. But I also, as each day goes by, there's more and more interest, I think, in retention. What are we doing to retain businesses that we have in the city, especially under the stresses of COVID-19? So an idea that, that I want to bring forward, it's going to take a little bit more effort to flesh out, is, is basically putting together a task force. And this task force, well, goal would be to, to actually reach out to businesses on behalf of the city, not on behalf of any of the other agencies that are doing the same, but what are we doing as a city to reach out to our businesses, to find out what it is that they need from us or what we can do for them? And so I'll be looking to establish that task force, as well as staff that task force. The other is, is when we've chatted about this, and I know Councilmember Esmondola and I have, have done some preliminary work on this, but that is, and this ties into Councilmember Kirchner's comment of a minute ago, which is emergency planning. I have a, I have a belief that, you know, we need to make sure that we're as on top of our game for emergency planning as a city, as we possibly can be. And so at, at a not-too-distant-future date, again, another, yet another ad hoc committee that will be Councilmember Esmondola and myself, beginning the process of working with the city staff in regards to making sure that our emergency planning is getting the prioritization that it, that it needs to. And again, it ties in perfectly with the anniversary of, of the dam incident. Long-winded for me tonight, but I'm going to echo the thanks, the heartfelt thanks, and the extreme respect that I have for two individuals. First, Shannon Chaffin, our city attorney. You know, he, he, he answers a lot of our calls at all times. I recently have had, had the opportunity to have to, to call on Shannon for several, several different things, and he's been very accessible and very patient, and I think he's doing a wonderful job for the city, so I want to make sure and call him out for that. And of course, last but certainly not least, and I know she hates this, but to our interim city manager, who's very, who has been extremely instrumental in shepherding this city through the last few years of, with some stuff that no one ever dreamed that would be, that we would be experiencing. So again, to both of you sitting up there, my, my deep appreciation, respect for your professionalism, your accessibility, and patience. And with that, I believe we're going to adjourn to closed session, and we will talk to you all after closed session.